Zoom to start. Otherwise, I will forget. Is the DRB still going on?
No, they're done.
Oh, good. She'd be getting Megan in. Oh, there she is. All right. That's fine. Think I saw Megan's binder in the bottom of the frame there, so that's a good sign. Is your binder a blue one? You're muted.
Oh, sorry. What do you mean you saw my binder?
Your FBC binder. I didn't know if you... Oh, there it is. Look at that.
You mean my bedtime reading? And?
Got your map out.
My poster.
Right.
When I was 10, it was Sean Cassidy, but now it's the regulating plan.
Do you feel like bringing too much geography home with you?
Sometimes.
Sorry, though.
No, I enjoy it. This has been really fascinating process.
And there will be consequences.
Uh-oh.
Well, yeah, it's not all theory at some point, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's the town you live in.
That's right.
It is a thing about, like, working where I've been for as long as I've been. You really get to see your mistakes or oversight, things you wish you had done, right there.
I bet. Yeah, I kind of think about that meeting with the DRB in which they said, "How come you're so picky about not having flat roofs?" We're like, "Oh, okay, if that's really hard for you, I guess flat roofs might be okay." And now I think, "Oh, why did we ever say that?"
How many buildings have been built since then where?
Yeah, yeah, we had no idea at the time. We're just... For the DRB. So it's 7:02, but seeing as we only have us planning commissioners on the call so far, I think we'll wait another minute or so. I know it was actually quite slow for me connecting, so people are on their way in. And I'm guessing that there's nobody in person except you and Melinda.
Thus far, that's where we're at.
Okay. Hi, Jill.
And I've seen lots of email traffic about getting the annual report done. I confess I haven't read the draft of it yet, but...
Yeah. I just read it this evening, so thank you. And hopefully Shayla will join us too, but thank you, Jill, for working on. It looked good. I put in a couple comments in on the Google Doc just for clarity, but overall it looks really good.
The town clerk will be starting to hassle us for those annual reports in a week or two, so good for us to get them packaged up and get them ready for publication. Chris Chapin coming in. Closer, edging closer to a forum.
Yeah.
I noticed one thing that might, we might not get into this, but we might be worth mentioning. The cheat sheet, which is wonderful, but I think, I'm pretty sure it has some things, a couple of things on it that aren't in the version that the planning commission has. I think, like, front porches. And if I'm incorrect, then I'll just be the first of many things I stick my foot in my mouth on tonight. But I believe there might be a question or two on something they see here, but they don't see in their current version.
That'll be my fault in terms of managing versions, so we'll cross that bridge, but thanks, Jeff. We'll cross that bridge and get to it.
They're all good things.
Are they? Can you give us a sense, Taylor, which one is more recent?
If porches are required and shown as required on that cheat sheet for all districts, that would be the most up-to-date version that we're working on internally.
I see. Okay, great. I'm guessing that our binders are quickly getting outdated.
They're getting outdated, but we don't want to overwhelm you.
Exactly, that's fine.
Sticking with what we gave you, and I think Jeff will try to hit on the changes we've made internally as we go.
That sounds good. Okay. Hi, Shayla. Thank you for joining. Hi, too. Okay, so now we have four planning commission members, our critical mass. So let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're already recording. And we can start, as always, with some, if there's any public comments that's related to items that are not on our agenda. So we have several folks here, and then I see Chapin has his hand up.
This isn't public comment, but a question about the agenda. Were we going to look at and maybe approve the general text of the annual report for the town report at this meeting, or is that the next meeting?
Well, I don't know that it's actually been shared with all commissioners.
It hasn't, but it's pretty short, and that's a question, I guess.
But I feel like we knew ahead of time that we would have two people unable to attend tonight. And I do feel like we should share with everyone. I also had a question in there. I went in and put some comments and questions just this evening about some dates. Just if we could add some dates. I guess my sense is that it's, we should not move it forward tonight. Matt, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I have one, which is looming for me, which is you're meeting again in a week.
Yeah.
And so what we can do is, if I've got a version that folks want me to launch out to the PC, you know, Thursday or Friday for next week, we can just do it then. That's fine.
Yeah, I would say, you know, I think all of us who are on the call have seen it, have contributed in several of your cases. I just looked at it tonight, and so if we can fill in a couple little info pieces that were in the comments and do the final little editing and then distribute it, that would be great, because then we can vote.
Yeah, and I apologize, folks. It was definitely me slowing it down there in the beginning, so.
That's fine. Okay, so thank you for that, Chapin. Other public comments? All right, so our next order of business is to approve the minutes of our previous meeting. Get in front of me. Just FYI, I don't know if... Oh, and now I can't find the minutes.
We'll get them up on the screen in a second.
Oh, okay, great. That's great.
And I think I know what you're gonna say, which is, I tried to sign in.
Yeah, I wasn't...
And it wouldn't...
Yeah, I wasn't able...
Send me an email, and it wouldn't let me do it.
Yep, me too.
I'm also okay with them as is. I'll move that we accept the minutes.
Okay, and Jill seconded.
I didn't see much to change, so I'm seconding. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just had a couple little, again, very small edits. If they're coming up on the screen. Is that correct?
He just actually... Let me do something.
I know it's tricky with the owl going at the same time.
It requires the multiple machine dance. Unfortunately, the one we're using is slow.
If those of us who are on the Zoom are okay with them, I would be happy to amend my motion to be with Megan's edits included on the basis of the fact you said they were minor.
Okay, also, I found mine up here. If you'd like me to share my screen, I could do that if you give me permission.
Absolutely. Just a sec. If I can get you. There you go.
Okay. Got the correct date this time, Chapin. Let's see. There was a little misspelling of my name, so I fixed that. I added, yeah, I spelled, no, I didn't spell it right, sorry. I felt like that was not correct, right? I added Jeff's last name. It felt like, you know, for future reference. Added a couple little fiberglass door, whatever. Might be it. It was pretty small stuff. These were great minutes. Oh, just the thing about streetlights. Again, me concerned about several different styles of street lighting on one corner or street segment. I just added that. I hope that other people's memories.
You know, when I viewed them this afternoon, that was in there.
Yeah, I did these this afternoon. Yeah, that was me.
So you were able to edit?
No, I did, I changed the font color. I couldn't get in and properly, like...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I was able to, yeah, strike through and highlight things and that kind of stuff, but it wasn't with track changes. It was like changing the fonts. Yeah. Then, just again, clarity points at the end here. So that's all I had. Did anyone else have changes, or I guess you already have said that you don't have changes? So we can revisit Chapin's motion.
Yeah, which is to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, and Jill seconded. I'm gonna stop sharing so that you can see everybody. Okay, so all in favor of approving the minutes as Chapin moved with edits? Okay, great. So that's unanimous for those of us who are here, Shayla, Jill, Chapin, myself. Right, chill, chill, myself. Yeah, okay. All right, so now we get to dive in to form-based codes, and we will...
You want me to share as well?
Yeah.
Ask Jeff to take over.
Yeah, Jeff's got a short presentation, and I'm gonna let him dive right into it, and I will talk later.
Yes, and forgive me for making a presentation, but I figure if this saves if it saves one question because someone has had a misunderstanding, it'll pay for itself, and if it's two, we'll be ahead, so. Obvious disclaimer. Reminder of those three easy pieces, we're on number two. We started at the bottom. And I hope everyone has their regulating plan with them, because we might quickly get into some other issues. Basically, what we're doing with the form-based codes, with the standards, this is a visualization of it. It's actually applied to a piece of Northern Virginia a while back, but actually, there are buildings here now. But in essence, when you do a form-based code on raw land or currently developed land, you're laying down those RBLs, you're deciding where the streets and blocks go, and you're setting up the rules. You call it the rules of the game with market economy. We set up the rules, public sector, but they have to be smart rules so that it can be built by the private sector. This isn't 2A, but you might imagine it's a very optimistic version of 2A with streetcars leading into Burlington, Burlington Airport, half-corner's loop. Shift of gears, a point about, now, we just did the architectural standards, which are important, but to stress the importance of the building form, this is a real example of an Albemarle County where they tried to only use architectural controls. And this is Thomas Jefferson's home, Monticello, and my former business partner of 20 years, Mary Madden, a few years back. The Board of Architectural Control, this is home of University of Virginia, so a lot of people with PhDs, I'm sure, on the BAC. A project came to them, and they sent him home packing, said no half a dozen times, and basically, they made him do all the things you kind of see on Monticello. Ortho, white trim, brick cladding, but they didn't deal with the really serious, kind of larger-scale issues. And street space and blocks, and of course, it's even worse than this looks, because Toys R Us, it's an old picture, they've gone bankrupt, so who knows? Maybe it's a Halloween costume store seasonally. So now, jumping into really what the building form standards do. Most important thing is making the street space. Big aspect is height. One is too tall, one is not tall enough. For most of America, variation is, of course, appropriate. If St. Peter's Square in front of the Vatican, especially if you're a Catholic, that's a place where everything should be exactly the same height, because it's that high up, but not very many places in America. So you need a minimum and a maximum. You can obviously go way too far. A quick point, this is aesthetically awful, but there's also a functional problem. This, and it's probably more than 20 stories, but say it's the 20-story building. Obviously, a mismatch, but that 20-story building is like five, four-story or four, five-story buildings stacked on top of one another. It probably means that where those buildings would be sitting, there's parking lots or empty space, just because this mega building sucked up all the demand for several years. So aesthetically and functionally, part of the idea behind the height is we're thinking about spreading it around, because we want to create streets and blocks. So we have those rules. And by the way, these little snippets of code are not your code. Yes?
Jeff, on that, if you could go back one slide, I just had a question about the house with the pitched roof. It looked to me as though it's four stories, and so is the brick building next to it, even though it looks so much higher. Is that, are they both four stories?
Are you talking about this one with the little mini porch and...
Yeah.
I would say, no, this is three stories with an attic story.
Okay, so that just has the attic story, but it looks so much lower than the four-story building next to it?
Yes, and that's actually not unusual, and I'll say it's one of the, not that we're gonna get this kind of variation, but we're inviting variation because different builders and developers, we're regulating by story with a cap, but different builders and developers, it's kind of interesting. They all think they have the magic formula, and one developer will say, "Well, I'm gonna do 10-foot ceilings and call them lofts," and that's the ticket to make for success. Somebody else will do nine, et cetera. So what you're seeing here between the clapboard and the red brick building is that kind of a thing. The red brick building is just taller on every floor, so and it really adds up. Maybe that second story is a special room, too.
Yeah, it also demonstrates that how having dormers and an attic story really... What's the word? It softens the height.
You can imagine if you're standing, maybe even in the middle of the street, you're not seeing much roof, because it's falling away, so yes.
Thanks.
Off on the side of the way. Now, the idea about the placement and the required building line. If you look at these buildings, they're actually stylistically pretty different. And they could be more different, because they hold together, because they're standing shoulder to shoulder, making that Main Street sidewalk environment. So that's a reference to our required building line. These are really tight. Our required building line is actually two feet thick, so there could be a little bit more articulation than this. And a point, it's not just for Main Streets, even if you get into this single-family residential neighborhood. Now, it's a lower density, so it can be looser, but there's real value in having the buildings line up and kind of make a place. Another advantage, by pulling those buildings forward, you make the street, so that's an advantage, but also you have that space, you're creating space behind the building. We've seen the unfortunate things happen when you have parking in front. But by pulling the building forward, you have extra space in back, which can be a buffer to different uses behind it. In a perfect world, that's the place where there'll be full of gardens and children playing and the garbage cans and a little bit of parking. In the world we have for a while, there's gonna be a lot of parking back there, but it's a good place to put that stuff behind the building. And I'm gonna show you an image. Don't take this too literally as being what half corners will turn out like. This is this is a development, the name just went out of my mind, but it's out of my mind. But it's on Sullivan's Island, outside of Charleston, South Carolina. This is a 2009 picture, and what you see here, there's some bad stuff, but this might be imagine that River Landing Drive is 2A. And notice how the buildings have the stuff behind them. The parking isn't back, so you have that street space in front. There's some missing teeth there, et cetera, but I have to point out something interesting. And there's some weird, because of the satellite photos, folding, but this is a drive-through bank. You notice it doesn't, it exists, but it's completely out of the public space. A good street, and then over here, let's see, I've got up on top, that's actually an internal block gas station. So this is kind of an extreme example. This is a high-demand, very high-demand area that was kind of behind the eight ball for development here, right outside of historic Charleston. So the building form elements, we really concentrate on the front of the building, much more freedom on the sides, in the back. On the sides especially, because those will not be terribly exposed. Those will tend to be closer adjacencies. The controls we exercise are not intended to be really about style, but about functionality. And there's always the thought that, well, it's kind of silly to require windows and doors on a building, because nobody would ever build something that didn't have them, but they do all over the place. It'd be okay if they were only damaging their property, but if you're across the street from that, you're really, I hate to put it in terms of real estate values, but you're damaged as well. So that's why the code has so much upfront, literally, in the controls. And that's different. It's different if you're on a Main Street retail environment or a commercial area, and especially if it's a residential. If it's retail especially, you want people on the sidewalk to see inside the building and vice versa. If you're a residence, you don't want people to see inside your residence, but you want, in turn, to look over and survey the street. Those eyes on the street are very important for safety and keeping pedestrian comfort. I'm gonna shift gears to uses now. There's an idea that form-based codes have looser controls. You know, when we're talking about a Main Street environment, which, if you noticed on the regulating plan, is very limited where we require it, that's kind of the exception, but even on that street, there's a kind of a "don't sweat the small stuff." If you're this person pushing, or you're the baby getting pushed there, what happens on the ground floor, those kinds of uses immediately change, in effect, what the environment is. But what's happening in the upper stories has an effect, but it's much more removed. So typically, the way we have uses designated in the code, sometimes it's specific on the ground floor, but it's almost always much looser up above. And here's one example, not too different from what we have for the orange sections. And, you know, if you look at those broad categories in comparison to, and I believe that zoning symbiology, that is from Prince William County, Virginia, but it's classic Euclidean use-based zoning, which I think starts to look a little ridiculous. You can't even tell those color differentials. There's so much fine scale. And then the idea of street space. People actually like, rather than having buildings jumbled about, they actually like that kind of made contiguous space. That's the kind of environment you're after, albeit... That's, that's the kind of environment you're after. Albeit, I could, I could see an observation coming from any one of us that maybe that sidewalk could be a little wider. All right, that's true. And then here's the example, Chicago's now old codes, but these were, you know, these were modern in the seventies. They probably gave that building that's not just to the right of this woman walking down the street, they probably gave him a million dollars or more of extra bonus height for creating this plaza on the ground floor and somehow they thought it was a good thing. I think it's obviously not. And the fact is, the retail spaces, the stores that are behind these buildings up on Pilotes actually do less well than the ones that are right on the street. It's a, you can kind of sense that this, this person is going to be more comfortable when they get about 100 feet or 75 feet down the street, even though it is again, a little too skinny, a little too narrow. Now I'm going to shift gears and talk about saving the earth. How to make really sustainable places. 13 trips a day, they vary, but most places have some idea of how many, in a typical suburban environment, how many trips a day your car makes. And if those are electric cars, yeah, the energy use will be different, but still the waste of, of time and land will still be there. But and it's not just about energy use. Here's a chart. It's 2010, but it's, I'm wondering how self-explanatory it is. It's assuming everybody has green automobiles. And then there's CSD, conventional suburban development. That's kind of the normal stuff. Gated communities or communities where just houses, shopping centers, urban centers. And then when you get to, most of what we're going to have, let me try and speed this up. Most of what we're going to have in Taft Corners will be TOD, transit-oriented, oriented development. That's really what we're talking about in Taft Corners. Although we won't have hard rail transit there for a while, although eventually we will. But if you look at the either single-family attached, which would be row houses or townhouses, or the multi-family apartment buildings, how much if they're in that TOD or that kind of urban environment, how fundamentally more efficient they are or less wasteful they are with energy use. And this is both household and transportation. It's just for sustainability, the biggest thing, and I'm biased as an urbanist, but the biggest thing is having compact, walkable human settlements, otherwise known as towns and cities. It makes everything else work so much better. So even we add our solar panels, our efficient, super-efficient motors, et cetera. They all are, we can take much more advantage of that in an urban situation. This is a 2006, but looking at carbon dioxide emissions per household. And the green spots are greener. They have lower carbon dioxide emissions. And there are the cities, Oakland, Berkeley, San Francisco. And the places that are in the red, those are the burbs because people are spread out in both the transportation and their, you think about it, their heating and cooling energy is, is much less efficient. And finally, a point, this is a little maybe more esoteric, but thinking about stormwater runoff. Now, the red graph is per acre. As the density goes up, obviously, we're talking about, well, except Taft Corners, there's no density, but there's all that hardscape. So the water runoff is probably already up there, even though there's not really, no one's home. But in general, if you look at that in a, in a town or a more compact mixed-use development situation, as the density goes up, and I don't want anybody to look at where it starts to say, you know, the 128, 250, that's, I know, that's, that might be getting to Singapore levels. We're not talking about that. But the runoff per person goes way down. So by having these compact places for those acres, they'll have to deal with water, stormwater runoff in a different way. But when you look at all of Williston, they'll be much better for the environment than if the people are spread out. And another thing is just people's attitudes have been changing for a while. Most of this is kind of, I don't know, five or 10 years old information. The market has changed. Attitudes are different about driving. And the proportion of people who want to live in a single-family detached house versus something else used to be kind of 75% want to live in that single-family house, 25% other stuff. It's kind of flipped. Now, so the world is coming toward this more walkable development. The big problem is architects, with apologies to anyone present, don't know how to, most of them don't know how to build that stuff. So we've got to tell them. And by the way, I was not standing in the bushes beside this building. I was standing on the sidewalk. Obviously, one of my pet peeves. So let's, let's get going doing good transformations like that. All right, do we want to start at page one? And should I, I've got, I've got this up. Should I share my screen and show my version or?
Yeah, Jeff, why don't, why don't you drive? And I think folks know, and Jeff knows, but I encourage the planning commission that, you know, while you're looking at the building form standards, understand that there are different ones and that they correlate to the colors of the streets on your regulating plan map. So if you have your, your big map with you, this is the one I'm talking about. And it, sometimes it just helps to think about these building form standards and maybe think about a location that you recognize in Taft Corners as you're, as you're thinking about them. But Jeff, I think just maybe, maybe just start from page one and then it'll, it may wander between the map and the standards a little bit as we go.
And I have my red pen ready. Page one. It's a pun to say it's pretty standard. 16 and 17. 16 is trying to be a little bit of an introduction. There's no way in the world that one picture can show what an urban general can be because it can be so many different things. A little bit easier with the storefront and maybe the urban neighborhood, but there's still, one picture can't do it. The general provisions trying to get people used to certain terms and things that will apply to all the form standards. Chetan?
Yeah, I wondered, and this is a general question. The first picture on the left doesn't have as many balconies as are in our draft code. And I wondered, as a general principle, do we want the examples to meet the code that we are publishing?
Yes, sir. And if I, yep, you're just right. That, that makes life harder. Duly, duly noted. And no, no excuse, that, that was, that's been in there a while.
Well, and it, and it makes a point. I, I just, I didn't know because it, this will come up a couple of times. And it's a really minor thing on the second one is, I don't think we're going to allow blade signs like that stiletto or that shoe, that red sign. Am I right that we're probably not gonna?
I thought we.
Are we going to allow them? Okay.
Okay. Not rid of corner signs. We did not get rid of blade signs from what I remember.
Okay, fine. Thank you. That's it.
And I'll try and take a look and make sure that one fits within the size. All right, Jill?
Yeah, on page 17, the diagram B, that sort of like shape, I haven't seen that or experienced that in the street. I'm curious, how does that benefit pedestrians or, you know, if we're talking about kind of what you were saying with the plaza where there's developer having more space or less space. I would love that unique design if it's creating more area for a splash pad or more, you know, more area that's unique for the community, but I haven't really come across that.
Well, illustration B and talking about the block corners, what's a block corner and what's not?
Yeah, just that dip is that, you know, is it creating more parking? Is it?
Oh.
It's giving you more place for bikes to be stored?
Yeah, the, the, when someone's, let's see, when someone's, in the placement standards, one of the lines is if you're building a building on a lot, let's say this lot, I'm going to, I'll go to the hand because it's bigger. If you were, if you were building a building on this lot, you're required to put your building in the corner within a block corner, quote unquote. And that's because, that's important because the street, the, the making of the street space, there's a, there's a kind of a rule and that if people have to walk by a blank area, a dead space longer than about 60 feet, they'll, they'll turn around and come back. And that comes from both, it sounds a little, a little mercantile or craven, but the people who study shopping centers and get paid a lot of money to do it because, you know, shopping centers, they want to pick your pocket as much as they can. And they're creating fake streets, but they've done all sorts of studies with, you know, stop motion cameras and things that show that in a shopping center, if people have to go by a dead space, like two shops that are empty, they never make it across. They'll turn around and come back. So if you think, if you apply that to a real street when you're crossing an intersection, it's not as bad because, you know, there are things going on down the side streets. But still, that's kind of a hole in that continuous street section. So to define the space, we're telling everyone, you need to build the corners. Now, where somebody might, so you'd be required to build here, but across the street, that's an area you could not have your building on. So that could be the, the street wall with space behind it. So you could do something with. So this is, the purpose of this diagram is just to make it clear if it ever got, so planning and zoning, if someone's trying to, you know, not put their belly to the corner.
Is it just your anchor stores? Like you have your pharmacy, that's already ready to come in, but you don't have the things to fill in the middle. So you create, like driving people into the middle?
Well, you always want to build that corner to make so that the, the feeling of enclosure in the street is stronger. If you're, and if you're going to make a public space, you should do that purposefully. You know, you should do it there for a reason and make sure it happens. So you don't get something like that Chicago example where it's just kind of an ugly leftover. Did that make?
Yeah, thanks.
And then on the street walls, we tried to do a lot of illustrations. The one I haven't gotten, Jill, is one that chose more green. And I'm digging for good examples. I found a bunch, but it's, it was, and I'm, I'm finding more. It's funny how many of them were interior. I think part of that is the, the pictures I was getting were really fancy, you know, like high art. And those are mainly indoors because it's just a high maintenance thing. But I don't want you to think that I've forgotten or blown that off.
Well, no, and I saw in this, reading this section, there's even just ivy on a wall. I think that's, I mean, that's a good example of sort of a, a minimal meeting of a kind of a greenery.
And, and the dooryard's right in front of it, so it's a natural. Megan?
Yeah, I actually had a question on the, on page 17. Right at the bottom, there's some pink or red writing that says 30 feet, right, 36, 30 inches or 36 are option for urban neighborhoods, but I couldn't figure out what that referenced.
Go up to.
Oh, now I see. Okay, it's really.
Yeah, placement.
Okay, thank you. I was just unable to find the.
Yeah. And it's, maybe I should have made the 24-inch zone pink as well. I wanted to draw people's attention to that. It's an option and it's one thing we've done in at least one other code. The areas that were kind of less intense, well, we, we did a code in Northern Virginia. The, the more urban areas which are mixed use, it was 24 inches, so a relatively tight articulation. But then on the areas around it, which were all, the existing pattern was they were all residential, mainly apartment buildings. We enlarged that to 36 inches. So, you know, just another foot, but the, the articulation of the buildings is a little deeper. So that might be an option to add. It seems a little esoteric, I know, but it's, it would, when we're, well, I can't say when we're old, old and gray. When there's a lot of this stuff built and you or your children go frolicking on the streets of Taft Corners, you'll notice a little bit of extra, there'll be maybe a little deeper building offsets or the bay windows, et cetera, in that 36 versus 24s.
Okay, thanks. I, I'm not terribly opinionated on the depth of that, but I just couldn't figure out what that was referring to.
Okay, if anyone gets terribly opinion on, opinionated on it after the meeting, just let me know. Let, let us know. Okay. On page 19, the pink text about having curb cuts and driveways at least 100 feet from any block corner or other curb cut, that's really a kind of a technical thing. It, it, I, I think 100 is conservative, so I don't think Public Works will, will have a problem with that. It could be maybe a little tighter, but I think Public Works might have a problem with that. Jill?
Um, I was curious, back on page 18, oh, the little O, the private area open above the second story, are we talking rooftop decks in Taft Corners? So, or rooftop pools or things that have, you know, a view of mountains or water if, if they're able to?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's a private open space where it can be on the roof.
Thanks.
And the roof could be flat right there, which it would have to be. All right. I'll just say diagram F is kind of an important thing. Oh, I should, I went too quick. Just, just so that you have, we're requiring people to step the floor. If they're on a big hill, you can't have a situation where one end, the storefront is right there and you go down the hill. And suddenly the storefront is up there. It doesn't, doesn't work. We want to, we want to have those ground floors step. That's why you have for the ground floor, you have the, the variation in how tall it can be. Sorry. Who was first, Jill or Megan? Oh, she's over there.
Okay, thanks. Um, so back on page 19 again. And let me see, 5C, right at the top of the page. A street wall may have no more than one pedestrian entry gate, maximum five feet wide. No more than one access gate that is opaque and maximum 20 feet wide. I'm guessing that's for cars.
Or, or it could be, I think we've got a, in, in another section, we've got a picture of one that has some big dumpsters behind it or electrical equipment.
So I was curious why we have a maximum number of pedestrian entry gates set at one?
Because these are, I think, there's, there's an exception to every rule, but as a rule, these are going to be really short. And it may be that we need to expand that, but they're going to be really short. So you don't want someone to, you want to make an allowance so there's a pedestrian gate, but you don't want someone to defeat the purse, purpose by having a bunch of gates.
I see. But wouldn't that depend on how long it is? I mean, like, wouldn't, like of the other things that you have in here are based on a, like a linear span. And I was curious why this is, wasn't, you know, wasn't similar in that way?
It's a, it's a judge. It's a, it's a judgment and maybe an assumption, and we know how to spell assumption, that, that there, the walls are going to almost as a rule be so short that it would make sense to have more than one. But I'm saying that, I, you can probably hear my voice with an acknowledgement that what you're saying makes some sense.
Okay, so maybe there could, I mean, just to be extra cautious, there could be some kind of like, the street wall is going on.
Yes.
A certain amount that, then we would, there would be, uh, you know, an additional gate or something like that.
And Megan, I want to, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I would say consider it, consider it done. Also, I think there's a problem with opaque.
The one thing I would add there, and I'm not sure the PC has seen it. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. I think this is the, you know, kind of the, the most recently revised section five that the PC hasn't seen yet, but we, um, we're kicking around having a standard for street walls that are longer than 40 feet, requiring that built in seating. Um, so I think, you know, when we do have larger walls, you know, we're going to have a lot of that span with seating. Um, you know, and then you add in the gate, there, there isn't really going to be much more room um, uh, for other elements. So are other gates necessarily? So on, on that point, I think, you know, Jeff's correct. The, the one question I had for Jeff actually is that, Jeff, do we want to be more specific here that we're talking about a street wall on a specific parcel? And that, that street wall continues onto a different parcel? Um, it's kind of considered a, a separate street wall or?
I would, yeah, although I would think that's not necessary because these are rules for each.
Okay.
Developer project. Jill?
Yeah, so my, mine is on 6D. Um, if we, striking that second sentence, these requirements are not applicable along alleys. As someone who pushes a stroller around in cities, when people do that, you have to clunk them down and, you know, that same goes for any sort of wheelchair use. And I don't know if that's an expense thing or if it's like a sidewalk thing, but you, and it depends, right? If you're on the front facing one, we're all, everything's in a row and it's the retail, you don't come across it. There's cutouts. But if you go down a side street, it's the alley where the truck's going, you're, um, that's the exception. That drives me nuts.
So sorry, where are you? I hear what you're saying, but I'm.
6D, the second sentence.
6B, oh.
Jill, there is a difference between a curb cut and a ramp. I think, talking about a ramp.
Well, I'm talking about like just that the sidewalk is, has a curb and you have to, there's nothing there. It doesn't level out. It doesn't, it's not a cutout. But I'm saying, how do we, could we avoid that?
So a curb cut is, is usually refers to like, you guys can correct me if I'm in, if I'm wrong, but is more like a, uh, an interruption of the curb so that cars can get in and out. It specifically reference whether there's a, a wheeled access ramp on that curb.
So sidewalk, the sidewalk where you're walking, Jill, is going to remain sidewalk. It's just a curb cut from the street. So if you're walking with your stroller, um, past a curb cut, you're, you're just going to be in the sidewalk. There would be no place where you would, you would drop down two inches.
All right. I think we can make a note on, uh, to check on that.
And I'm just trying to understand if we have it written in there the way that I've experienced it in cities with rolling vehicles.
Yeah, I want to, I want to do, uh, just make enough to double check that with Public Works. The distance between the curb uh, with the parking lane where the cars would be turning in and where the sidewalk is, we've got uh, the, uh, the tree lawn. So there's seven to eight feet for them to make that transition. Uh, and there's no reason, I mean, it, it would tend to already be made by the time they get to the sidewalk. But I'm going to make a note to, to check with, um, to check with Public Works because I, I have a former mother-in-law who had real problems walking. And I never thought about it, but when she got, walking down the sidewalk, when she got to a ramp, it was like that, she had real trouble. So we'll, we'll check into that. I don't think it's the zoning here and our street specs are pretty two dimensional, but I'll see. Is that, yeah, no, that's an issue. Chapin?
I, I apologize if I missed anything because I, I, my cord wasn't working right and I, I had to power back up. But I have three comments on these two pages. The first is on the topic we're just talking about. I hope that throughout this entrances are all handicapped accessible. And I'll bring that up in more specific ways from, um, on, on subsequent pages. And then on page 18, um, on, it must be for L, the private open area must be open. So the sky, except for the tree canopy, percolate porches and decks. Um, and to me, and solar canopies.
Chapin, I have to say, I don't think that's a good idea to read, because then people's private open area won't be open.
Well, if, if, if you want, you know, you might in your private open area have umbrellaed tables. And to me, if a part of it is a solar canopy, that's a work of art, looks like a, you know, I mean, to me, I just don't want to, I want solar canopies to be visible and to be a, a hallmark of this area. A feature, if you will, a theme. And so maybe I misunderstood the context, but.
Well, I was definitely presuming that things like, uh, like canopies on tables would be, uh, would not be any issue. And if then those are solar, then it's not any issue. They're kind of temporary, take them up and bring them down.
And another example, if somebody has a private, a open area and they have a gazebo where you can go sit and talk, um, can't the roof have solar on it, you know? And so to me, yeah, I just didn't want to say it had to be open to the sky, except for those three things and not say, um, solar canopies are allowed. And, and again, it may be that they, that statement will be somewhere else and do without what you may, but I just want to bring that up. And then on page 19, uh, 7B, um, parking space at the top of a park, I should not be counted as blah, blah, blah. Shading and solar structures that are not clearly visible from the street space are permitted. I really want to strike that out. To me, solar structures should be a theme of this area and I would like them to be visible.
Chapin, can you cite that section again, please?
This is 7B, as in boy, publicly accessible parking structures. The, uh, end of that section.
Yeah, I had flagged that as well. Because, um, I agree with Chapin's point about them being visible. I also was unclear the way that's phrased. Well, first of all, it was hard for me to imagine parking on a roof in Williston. But I guess that's, uh, you know, if you had that many, I guess, an entire parking garage.
Yeah, typically the top, the top of the garage, they have, the, the sides come up about four feet. So you can't.
Right. No, I, I know. We have, there's even one in Burlington, but it's just hard to imagine Williston.
Oh.
But yeah, no, I, I get it. But the way that was phrased was, was very unclear to me. If we were talking about, um, shading and solar structures that are not clearly visible from the street space um, are permitted, it wasn't. Oh, now as I'm rereading it, I can't even remember what it was. I'm sorry. But I do agree with Chapin, like, that's, that doesn't make sense to me. We could, we could, should be able to see solar if that's what's being used.
Maybe I would just strike, uh, the part that says that are not clearly visible from the street space. And so shading and solar structures are permitted, period.
I agree with that.
Done. I, I think that, that makes sense. And we'll, we'll try and apply a little bit of devil's advocate to it to see if there's some way somebody could, you know, make that a loophole, but I've been trying that ever since Chapin first mentioned this and I haven't come up with anything. Okay. We're moving right along. Can we get a 20?
My next part was on 22.
Okay, good. I'm glad I don't have to try and explain the, the, all the graphics on 21. That diagram is, um, we've been trying to make that clear for years.
I do have a comment on 20. Should I raise it?
Oh, go for it.
On building height, B. Um, on 2A, it says, building heights are measured to the top of the wall plate or top of the parapet, whichever is higher. I understand that well. What I'm concerned about is if we do allow pitched roofs, the peak could be significantly higher than that. And I, our fire department ladder trucks will reach to a certain height. And so I just wondered, um, do we want to say anything about absolute height?
I would say no, because there, the fire codes, you know, there are real technical codes that deal with all that. And, uh, I think these buildings are going to all end up being sprinkled. So I think that issue is taken care of.
Okay, whereas they might not get a fire permit if it exceeds the fire department's ability to reach the peak.
They won't get permission to build it in the first place. I think that's what.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be sprinkled, et cetera.
It'll definitely be sprinkled.
And, and this could then just stand in case the fire department did get other, I know they just got new trucks, so.
And, and actually technically, that's not the limit to a building's height is what, what the, what the fire truck can reach because, but, but when you get beyond that, fire code makes you, you know, do a lot of other things. Actually, before you get to that point, so there's a, there's a bunch of technical standards that you have to comply with as, as the height goes up. All right, Jill?
Um, I was just trying to clarify in 2C4, if that's, it's sort of, um, we're against the walkout basement. You know, just like we're talking about layering height of three foot, two foot, the idea that you could have a retail or somebody that has their annex, you know, their rented apartment below.
I'm sorry. Tell me again where, I'm on page 20. Oh, I went on 22. No, I'm on page 22.
22, yeah.
Under stoops or front porches or?
The finished floor height shall be no more than eight inches below the first interior.
That's.
Sort of getting rid of that English basement.
No, that's actually under stoops or front porches. So that's just talking about, and the reason for that is absurd as it may seem, I have seen builders do a building where the, the, the first floor is up, but then the front porch is just a slab on grade.
Okay.
And that's a sad, that's a.
Yeah, I've seen that.
It's a sad thing. So that's only, only that. There are rules for, uh, for the depth of an English basement.
Okay.
Um, elsewhere.
23, page 23, I kind of just don't love the title neighborhood manners. Um, if we could thesaurus manners and I don't know if there's a better term, but it kind of makes me feel like there's one set of values.
Well, really? That's interesting. Well, I'll tell, um, we could come up with something else. The idea is that you're just being, you're being considerate of your neighbors. So the new stuff doesn't come in and.
Yeah, I think when you, I've had experience working in pretty diverse communities where one person's food smell smells different to others. And, you know, you can do that with development, the corner store versus the, the one that's the chain. I think it can get kind of loaded.
I'm open to.
I'm happy to pass if people are like manners. It's fine. Let's not debate it all night.
No, I'm open to suggestions. And this is a, it, it's a learning environment for me. So it is, it's, that's something didn't occur to me at all. So if you have an alternate, let, let, throw it out there now or, or email it later.
It's about being considerate and, um, uh, to me, it could also say, uh, neighborhood respect or privacy. I, I understood what manners meant and it didn't, I didn't catch the meaning you're saying, Jill, but I can understand that that is.
Right, because we're talking about walls and things. So it's, you know, if you don't like a neighbor, you just build a wall. And that's like, not what we're trying to create in this.
Well, yeah, although Robert Frost, good walls make good neighbors.
I'm not saying boundaries, right?
Yeah, well, if you have, the idea is you don't have to really deal, you, you don't have to be intimate with your neighbor until you walk out the front.
Right.
But that's a.
What, what about conduct? Or is that not really it?
No, that could work. It's, it's more like regulates, you know, it's more policy sounding, I think, than like.
What if it just said neighborhood design considerations?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that sounds good, too.
Neighborhood relationships.
Oh, I love that.
There you go.
Working together.
Yeah.
Just be in white.
Okay, we're gonna.
Can I, can I jump in, Jeff, on page 22?
Yes.
Um, I wondered on the left side, there's room for one more, uh, sketch. And I wondered about having somewhere in here, a, uh, an elevation like that or a trans, uh, slice through, as you call it, with, um, showing a mansard roof and how that would look as compared to adding story.
I, I didn't, I did hear you the first time you said it. I haven't been able to get to it. Although part of the reason it would, it would illustrate, but I, I don't think it would really apply directly to a rule. Look, do people raise their hand? Megan?
Um, yeah, this is perhaps a bit of a pet project of mine, but, um, this is as good a place I've seen as, as any to mention it, which is, uh, the project of adding allowances and perhaps even encouraging some, um, witch windows. And, um, I know we had, we had a conversation about it. Uh, it may have been, I can't remember if it was just me and Matt, but, um, they, you know, there isn't a lot of, uh, specific vernacular architecture that's unique to Williston per se. But the regional vernacular architecture that is a little bit more distinct, you know, beyond what we've already kind of talked about, the witch windows are, are kind of one of those, I don't know, endearing elements that we do see a lot around Vermont. I haven't actually found a house in Williston that has one, but, but just kind of wondered if we could put those in as an option, particularly as we're talking about dormers and, and other roof lines and the, the intersection of those with windows.
We could, and, and I will say, Matt, um, passed on your, uh, your affection for those. And I had, I had definitely, uh, Googled them and looked them up. And I, I don't know if I've ever seen that before, but I, I, I like them too. The issue is how can we, what can we do? I don't, I was unsuccessful trying to come up with anything that made sense to incentivize them.
I think if you just allowed them.
We can mention, maybe we specifically mention them in architecture if they are allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the architecture section on fenestration to say they are allowed, the thing that I think about them is that they are typically would be on the side because of the pitch of the roof where there's a lower building and that sort of, it, we're talking about packing buildings side by side right up to each other. So there's not going to be a lot of opportunity.
Oh, that, well, I think there still will be. If, I, I think there'll be some opportunities on the side, but also every dormer. Every dormer.
They're typically not on dormers. They're more as Chapin's saying. You know, where, and they're often retro, kind of like part of a rebuild or something. And I totally agree with Justin's comment that he just put in the chat about, you know, using appropriately. We don't want it to become some sort of Disney version where like the artificial. I mean, of course, all of this is a little bit artificial because they were, they were an adaptive reuse, right? And in, in the day. But I think they could be kind of an, if they're used selectively and it with a good kind of context, I think they could be a nice nod to the regional vernacular.
Okay, we will, we will do that. And, and as you see, we've got a couple of practicing architects on the team to, to bring that in. All right, Chapin?
Ooh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple more quick comments on page 22. Bay windows, which is E. I, I would vote for the red number, the 10 foot, because if, if someone, if a builder is doing the, the cost of putting in a bay window, I wouldn't want to limit there with that any, any more than we need to. On, on E, number three, the III, I would also, I would go with the red number again. In terms of projection, I think 42 inches is a lot and 30 inches made more sense to me. And finally, on F balconies, III or II.
Yes.
By enclosed, by balustrades, railings or other means that are 50% opaque or greater, that's a minimum. And I think 50% is a very high minimum for opaqueness of a balcony railing.
Well, you go for 30, we go for one third.
I, I was going to say it should be 25% because it's the minimum.
Okay, would you go for 30%?
I'm not sure. In other words, somebody might want some more privacy on their balcony, but in general, it takes away the feeling of it being an opening onto the street if it's much enclosed as a, you know, if it's an enclosed balcony instead of an open balcony. So I would just imagine a railing should be okay. And what percent is a railing?
Pretty, well, the concern is that they need some level of filtering so that there is, they're also a shelter. The person who's on it is going to be standing above it. But that they give some filtered privacy and also that the view of the spare tires and the hibachi and the old cooler that people store out there are filtered.
It's kayaks here, Jeff.
What's that?
Kayaks and mountain bikes on the.
Good point. So I would, could, could I talk you into one third minimum? That's still, that's pretty open.
I, I just think we should, it should be okay to have a regular railing, whatever that is.
No, yeah, but what about what's below the, I'm thinking the railing is just the handrail. You're talking about the whole setup.
I'm talking about the balustrades, the balustrades in the, in the railing. To me, it should, a balcony, I mean, in, in Europe, they're going to be mostly iron and it's going to be very spindly. And I just, I have a hard time saying it has to be a number as big as 30% even. Maybe, do other people feel that way?
Um, I think there are rules already about like pass through, you know, the, the distance between the rails.
The spacing is.
Child safety, like kids get their heads stuck in it and stuff, so.
That's already set.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if it's an inch or two inches wide and there's four inches gap.
Then it's 24%, 25%. I don't, so I will defer to the experts, but I don't think we should be trying to enclose the balconies because it, to me, it defeats part of the purpose of the balcony.
It's a balance.
And it's, and we're setting a minimum standard, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit more concerned. We don't have a maximum. Somebody could enclose it completely. And then is it really a balcony? I think it is if it's open to the air above the railing. But okay. And then on page 23, one more, which is just on the things, the red again, on the dormers for attic stories are permitted. And I think that the red is better. It should be 15. I would even go down to 10 foot wide. In other words, dormers and attic stories, if they're very wide, it's no longer an attic story dormer. To me, it's then a something else. So I would have said 10 feet wide and their collective width, not more than 50% of the facade. But I'd, I'd go, that's just a feeling.
10 is too, too small because once you get all the building materials, the interior space of a 10 foot dormer is going to be too small to put like a, you know, a, a bed or something in.
I thought, I thought these dimensions were inside dimensions.
No, they're exterior.
They're, they're exterior.
Okay. So we're an exterior here. On, on the bay windows, we were an interior.
Yes.
So, okay, so. Yeah. Okay, to me, it's a window. It's not a, an addition to your house if it's a, if it's an attic story and.
Well, I was, I was surprised. I was thinking everyone would really want to go to 20, which would give you 19, 18 something inside.
Yeah. But is that really an attic then?
Well, there's, remember American in Paris, Gene Kelly?
I think my question is what, what percentage of the ceiling area is slanted as opposed to not slanted? How's that?
Oh. Well.
We said 15.
Can we go 15?
Useful inside, but not dominate from the outside.
The, a big part of the purpose, the thought here is limiting the dormer so they don't, suddenly it's, you've got a full story. It's not a roof variation. I'm, is anyone else, I'm, I'm wondering if 15 isn't a good point to land? Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jeff, can I?
Yes.
Sorry, I, I hate to revisit, but I took you a minute.
No.
I, um, I also hate to just agree with Chapin, you know, but here I am.
I do.
F two, the opaque thing with the railings. I, I, I think I'm sharing his concern that like you couldn't have like a, I mean, not that anybody's going to do this probably, but like a pretty wrought iron like anister railing, whatever. But you'd have to somehow make it more opaque.
That's, that's a point. And we, I, I think.
I'm trying to look at like some of the photos to see if any of them made sense to me. And I, and one of the things that I don't like about one of the buildings we saw when we were walking around was the, the sort of semi their balconies, quote unquote, but they are like kind of mostly enclosed and they've got like a regular wall around a bunch of the, the front of them.
I have a proposal.
Okay.
My brain is, uh, my brain is slower than yours. I'm catching, I'm, I'm catching up too. I would propose that we do a minimum, maximum because I too, I think this, the solid wall is as bad as the piece of glass, which I think is really bad. So could we do, say, 25 to 75?
Okay with that.
And let's leave, I'd like to leave a little bit of room because for us to, to chew on it and look at some examples, kind of bring in Keith and Justin on it, but, but let's, I, I, I will, we'll head in that direction. And so maybe it's 2070 or something like that, but I think that's just makes sense.
And by the way, I like all the other things that are in there. And that too.
Okay.
Jeff, can I, can I reiterate one point that maybe I, I, I'm hoping people read and really understood, but that's just about civic buildings. Um, I just want to point people back to civic buildings and just remind them of that, that definition of civic building is, is pretty broad. It's not just municipal buildings. And that could be churches, that could be state owned buildings, that could be a lot of different things. So we're, we're for back to definitions decoding. That's a, that's a pretty broad out from the standards. And I think in a, in a positive way. Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, yeah, everybody should look at the definition of public building because I would, I would say it's pretty tight. It's supposed to be a it's a, it's supposed to be not about office buildings, but about kind of ceremonial buildings. City hall, a church, a, a temple. But, but the office building where, where the planners work doesn't get any respect. It's just an office building unless they're in city hall. Sorry, Melinda. But the idea is that these are kind of special buildings that are kind of about community aspirations. And there's some debate, you know, does, does the jail get one? I would say no.
Is there a definition in this?
I couldn't find the definition.
It's in, uh, it's in the first section, introduction and definitions. It's right up front.
Yeah, I have to say I've, there's some really unattractive churches. There's one in Burlington, which.
Yeah.
Or you all know which one I mean, like.
There's a couple.
That and shaft corners.
Isn't that very attractive?
Yes, and I would say that's in the category of what can you do about it? That's someone's aspirations. It's but it's a, I think there even, you know, legal constitutional problems with, with trying to muzzle those down too much. And there's some, sorry, god awful churches. You may see.
I, I want to thank Taylor for drawing our attention to that. And I did just read it finally and I agree with it, but I'm really glad to be reminded of that. Thank you.
Okay, so is the entire rest of this section good?
This may be controversial, but the very end of it, no more than one ADU per lot. And when we get to the, the yellow areas that are sort of residential. And with their housing crunch and, and people living in smaller spaces, I was wondering if it was out of the question to allow two. We're, we're trying to get density and it's another way to get density. Can someone have an apartment over their garage and in their basement or in the attic of their house or something? I, and I, it's a question more, I just, I, I was surprised that it was there as a limit.
I'm lost. Somebody point me anywhere.
Page 24. I was with you there Chapin too, because I also thought it was strange to regulate no more than two adults.
Those are, those are kind of absolutely standard things.
We have, we have guidelines on ADUs already. And one thing that I also, I, I flagged the two adults thing. And then also we, I believe in Matt, maybe, or Melinda, whoever's there can confirm this, but we also allow the owners to live in the accessory dwelling unit and rent out the main building.
Correct.
So I think this, some of these principles are at odds with our existing. Our existing, I don't, I guess it would be in the bylaws.
Well, and I think we're not talking enforcement, but that seems pretty hard to enforce, like monitoring.
Right. Yeah, where are you living?
Yeah, it's like, you know, you're starting to ask, we're like, do you live in this building? You know that?
Yeah.
Then you're talking with poor people and all kinds of stuff.
I have, I have no, I have no problem relaxing that.
Yeah.
Wherever.
I, I don't think we should say anything about who lives there because that just gets into dangerous territory with fair housing and.
Or like next door neighbor posts.
Disabled adult child. I mean, like.
Well, not that I'm, yeah, but there, there is a logic to having an owner on the premises because part of the argument for ADUs is they're kind of self policing.
Yeah.
Yes. And can we, I think it's in our current bylaw. So if we, if, if we could just merge this with our current bylaw, the square footage, I think is very similar.
We'll do it. We'll do it.
Chapin, to your original point about essentially a second dwelling, accessory dwelling unit on the property. Think take away that, that term accessory dwelling. Just take that away. You know, the reality is in, in these districts, we don't have a density standard, right? So, so theoretically, there could be three units on a property. Even in like, let's say your, your, your neighborhood frontage. But those three units wouldn't be restricted by the standards here for accessory dwellings. You know, when, when we use the term accessory dwelling, it's really specifically talking about a, a, a single family or a single household dwelling with a, a small unit associated with it by right in Vermont statute. And so I, and so I, you know, we're not, we're not limiting three units on a property by, by not allowing two ADUs here in the standard. Does that make sense?
I understand you, Taylor, and I'm not sure what, I, I, I sort of raised this as a question, not as a must, and I'm interested in what staff say.
Does it make sense to even have that section there?
Well, so where this, where this expands on what we do today is today, we would not let a, a unit in a row house building have an accessory dwelling unit. Because we look at, say, like a four unit row house building and Finney has a multi-family building. Right or wrong? So today, if somebody living on Zephyr Road said, I'd like an ADU in my basement, our answer would be no. Because our bylaw doesn't support that. So one, one way of looking at this provision is that we're expanding on that and saying, yes, this type of multi-household building, these households do get accessory units. And I believe Taylor, this goes beyond statute because what statute says you have to do is allow as accessory to a single, a single household dwelling. And that, that's always been taken to mean, you know, one dwelling in one building, one, one lot, et cetera. So I think, I like the idea of saying, yes, row homes can have ADUs. I, we're, we're being more expansive of that there. I don't like the idea of enforcing who lives there. Frankly, I don't even like the idea of trying to enforce that its owner occupied or not, but I know it makes people feel better if, if they think that's the rule. And, you know, we're, we're a long ways away from this, but there are communities where there's been legitimate or somewhat legitimate fear that, you know, like a private company is going to buy a bunch of houses, add a bunch of ADUs and then just rent the whole thing out and, and, you know, you're just, you're dealing with certain absentee landlords. So I get that. But I think that the main thing is to view this whole section as we're expanding beyond what's currently allowed in 20.1 because we're letting somebody have something that's accessory to a, a row home. A row home unit.
You said that much more eloquently than myself. Thanks, Matt. You said that much more eloquently than myself. Thanks, Matt.
I I think that's excellent and and I was thrown off a little bit by no more than one per lot. But certainly per row house makes sense to me if we're talking about row houses.
Well, this is an expansion. But we're going to strike they no more than two adults. I think. Okay, this will be we'll change it.
We'll work with that lot language, too. I I've just got a note, Jeff, and we can talk about that. Might do it. Yeah, but we can talk about it.
Okay.
And and also qualify where it says owner occupied to make sure it maybe parenthetically then say in either the ADU or the main.
It doesn't it doesn't say I well, we'll work on it, but I'm thinking it doesn't this language doesn't limit the owner to the other place, but if it does, we'll change it.
I I don't think it does. It'd just be good to clarify that it doesn't.
We've got reference there to the to that section of the UDRs where that's clarified. From my perspective, that's okay, Chapin, or enough?
I didn't know if you could see me. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I can't see you. Sorry. No. Gotcha. Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, next. Moving right along. Not that I want to rush us, but time is clicking.
Jeff, can I comment on a page that you're just called by?
Please.
Page 25. I just wanted to, because you said it was helpful in the past, I just wanted to comment on some of the elements that we see in these photos. And and I would love to do whatever we can to avoid the bottom left.
Okay.
So whatever that is, whatever allows that to happen, I find really unappealing and like the Chicago Plaza got filled in with something. But it's very similar aesthetically.
It's not bad.
Did not like it. So but I love the middle right photo. Like, I feel like that is is like, that's home to me, you know, that's like where where I.
Okay, the bottom left.
Thank you.
It's it's actually, I can say it's already gone.
Okay, I didn't have any other comments until the next pages.
I I do on that page that the the next drawing to the next thing to the right of that, is that a grate in the window on the right? It just passed the first bushes. And do we want to have any regulation about that sort of thing? Does it make it feel not welcoming if it's a like a prison kind of grate in front of the windows?
I don't. I would say no. I think what that actually is 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 like a although it looks like it's a lot higher than it needs to be. That may be some pardon my French stupid code issue. But I think that's a that's a a door that opens up and that keeps people from falling out. It doesn't go all the way to the top. It's not security bars.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if we wanted to say anything about security bars in general. And then on the lower right one, I can about meeting code, isn't that first floor, not the doorway, but the windows? Isn't that too high above the street for first floor? And then there's sort of a basement windows that are below, but it it didn't seem to me like it met our requirement that the first floor be within. Was it what it's six or eight feet of the?
Yeah, that one's not that one. I'm I'm I'll say I'm sure is not too high.
Okay, the the door looked okay to me, but the windows made it look to me like the door is not all the way up to the first floor.
No, I think it is, but the the windows are up, you know, 30 inches above the floor.
Okay. Are we okay with that design, too, with the way the basement windows are?
I think it's kind of cool.
Okay, I thought we were trying to avoid windows. You look in and see the inside, but okay. I
Yeah.
That's a big deal for me. That's it.
Anybody want to get really? One thing, and you probably already noticed that the the diagrams, we sometimes call these tofu diagrams. The diagrams on the left, they're showing the buildings from behind. So that to give a designer or developer an idea of just I call it a heads up of the different shapes that the building can take. So that they don't think it all is is one thing.
Megan, is your hand still up because you have a comment on this page? Okay. I have a question about the height of the building at the back. At the top of page 27 and and repeatedly on this in other sections, too, it says max height, one story. Towards the back of the property. And it looked to me like in the diagram, the tofu diagrams on page 26, the middle two, it looked to me like that building at the back was more than one story. And I also just wondered what the logic is and why we're saying you're limited to one story in that back section.
The same question. Thank you.
Well, like the 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 diagrams are, at the time we sent this out, had not caught up with the rules. So those diagrams have now been changed and I don't know if I can.
That's okay. So the so the second part of my question is still about why are we saying that it has to be limited back there?
Because we're two things. One, we're trying to have, we're trying, well, we're already requiring by the time someone is building their minimum build out to the front of the block, to the perimeter of the block. There if there that's a lot of building. By limiting it to the back, what we're limiting is the building get too deep, too dark. And we're preserving the block interior for light, air, parking. And and I think we're going to see as this evolves and, you know, I may be I may be rolling around in a in a chair or something to see it when there's this much built. But some of those black interiors, there's, we don't need that much asphalt. I think some of that asphalt will become some green open space in the back as the the parking area asphalt proves to be excessive. So by pulling the building forward. Also, we don't don't forget most residential or office buildings these days that that are being built of any scale are 65. The base unit is there 65 to 70 feet deep. And that's with it's a it's an efficient, there's a corridor down the middle and rooms off either side. So we're preserving some opportunity for the building to have short wings going back within that 80 feet. But basically, we're what we want are the perimeter buildings.
I get it. And so it's not really from the back so much as after 70 feet or 80 feet.
Yes.
And I do see the thing about letting light in as you get back there. And so the only thing I wonder is if on the building, if it's residential and what they have is a swimming pool on the back and it's got more than a one story roof, is that not allowed?
If there's solar panels, it's fine. Well, I I think I think a shade and I think we're we'll we're changing that language. So shade structures are not counting. I think a lot of these swimming pools, well, some some will be sort of on the ground, maybe surrounded by one story building. I think a lot of them might be on the roof deck.
This, yeah, okay. And I was gonna say, this is Vermont. There it's going to be enclosed, I guessing. But I understand what you're saying now. So I just I didn't know whether saying max height, one story was sufficient to allow for everything that we might think was okay, but I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, it's and it's one story or 18 feet.
Okay, I didn't see the 18 feet.
So that one story can be.
Okay.
Pretty grand.
On in that's on that page 27, where it says C placement number one facade A. I don't have a strong opinion. I'm sorry, I don't have a strong opinion about that percent. But when we get down to buildable area two, D and E. Maximum building footprint. I would go larger, the 15,000 and maximum building footprint for grocery stores, I would go larger. Yeah, I would do the larger number for each of them.
I will say and and I think those are reasonable when we're when we're planning those numbers to see what's and we always have these because sometimes, you know, especially with big landowner shift, the developer, the builder would like to come in and just do, you know, spew out footers and first floor and bring them up. But if you think about something that's 70 feet deep and then the maximum length we want for building. These numbers aren't too far off, so no, no need to give them a huge footprint. When the only way they could
Okay.
Me, it would be making a
Okay.
We don't want.
And then on 2H, the private open area equal to at least 15, I would go to 20%. And then I was wondering about how to account for multi story residential with the need for sufficient dog poop area, because if it's based on a percent of the building footprint, that doesn't account for the fact it might be four stories of residential and so they might need more grassy area.
Well, I'd say in what happens with dogs in cities is is the dog poop. You have to carry around little bags and people actually do that. 90% of them.
Williston, too.
So they'll be walking what they'll be, the dogs will be walked mainly in the streets and the in the tree lawns. And the and the squares and greens.
And and similarly, though, if there's young children going outside to play, it just misses by building area, not by footprint, not by number of units. And I just wondered if we need to have some break on it or some factor for the number of units.
I I would say we don't because we're 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 making sure that there's a a green greener square within and we'll have to we'll be tightening this up when we're looking at the regulating plan within about a two or three minute walk. Along with and the other thing I would add is and this is no, you know, past performance is no guarantee of future performance. The people who are building these residential units, you know, condos of pretty big scale. All wherever I've worked, they they they're selling their amenity package. And they're pushing that pretty hard. So everything from the absurd, which would be the virtual driving ranges to to the green roofs and the roof decks and the the swimming pools, which are which are real. So I think that's naturally pretty well provided and I think the 20% which is going to be usable space is going to be is worthwhile.
Thanks.
Jill.
I was just wondering if on these the tofu diagram, like when we get the person who wants to do something in diagram two, where it's open to the back. We talked about this, Jeff, in our in the interview that we did about contiguous space that whenever developer has to meet theirs, you know, for their spot that they're developing. You can get these little chunks that become intersper screen spaces. But, you know, to Chapin's problem point about the dogs and to Ron, who's not here to represent dog problems, if we had a whole city, right, the whole city block and they all have a contiguous space to the middle and that's a dog park because they've all met it and it's central between them and there's four different ways to get in through for everyone else. How do you incentivize something like that where it's, you know, they'll they'll meet diagram two, but if we got four of them to do diagram two and it's all facing the inside?
Well, I, yeah, I would argue that you'd want that in addition to diagram two.
Yeah.
Because just as it's important to have that, even even if it's for a whole building, that it's not quite private space, but for the building it is. So it's a little bit of a refuge.
Well.
And and I I'm not sure how to make it happen.
There's no, you can't write it in here. There's enforcement. There's not a way to kind of.
Well, I think where where you'd want it to be with the bigger blocks, there's a natural place to have in the center. I I think the incentive for it is going to be stormwater absorption. But that's that's the that's the thing that would put some green space in the center of these blocks in addition to the private space. And it's something that I see up up here in DC and the first place I lived in Alexandria. It was in a I was in the basement of a friend's house, but that block had the space because the block was a little bit bigger than just the lots. So there's a common space in the middle that had basketball courts and some other stuff. And it was full of neighbors all the time. But right now, the incentive for that is going to be in its use as stormwater absorption, so some pervious surface. As things develop and parking is not used, that's going to be a natural for it, but so I know I'm not giving you the a quite happy answer.
Yeah, because it's, you know, you see those people who just build their thing to be the whole city block, but then it's only for the people that are in in that facility that get to use that contiguous space that's now in the center. And if you're trying to do something that we're hoping for a road eventually that has one build starting. Not that I don't mind little pocket parks like here, there and there, but there's, you know, there's benefits to both if we have a section that's kind of like that. But then we have one that's a little bit bigger that might host some things that the community wants. Trying to navigate that.
I wonder if the like the regulating plan might be one of the tools that we could use for that.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I I go ahead, Jeff.
Well, it starts, it gets complicated.
It's complicated best.
Too much constraint and I I know I feel terrible saying this, but it's real. It's a real thing. Too much constraint on the development. But I'm maybe what we're doing, maybe maybe a way to do this would be to have the 20%, but say that some or maybe take it to 25. I'm gonna test that against the smaller blocks, but maybe the 20% and then some portion of that could be used in common with the rest of the block. But to but to really plop down a space, say, right in the middle of this block is a possibility that you don't have in this block. You know, the smaller blocks on here, no way. Here, probably not.
Not all blocks are equal.
Maybe you do, but I am concerned about getting into the issue of too much, taking taking too much and getting ourselves in trouble.
True.
Well, you could do it possibly the way we do a lot of things more on a kind of incentive basis, so that if somebody was developing a whole block or even half the block, that they might get some kind of bonus of some sort. I don't know what. If they were willing to make the, you know, either make part or all of the private open space be something that could be serviced for the whole serviceable for the whole block on that whole interior or or even in an adjacent site.
Well, I'd say don't don't forget, don't lose sight of, you know, we've got right now almost every two blocks.
Yeah, right.
Significant space. We're kind of short down here.
Yeah.
That's what I would stress, too. My my mind went to the same place that Megan's mind went to in terms of bonus. If we did want to provide some regulatory language about incentivizing co-location of private open space over multiple lots. It's pretty complicated to do, especially when we we don't at this point in time, really have firm standards regarding lot size. And we talk a lot, we we regulate, you know, building size, building frontages pretty heavily here, but we don't really regulate lot size. You know, back to the bonus conversation real quick and, you know, the one way that the one easy way to provide a bonus here would be height. I know that that may not be what people want to hear. But but really, that that might be it. And, you know, maybe maybe that's, you know, a second story. And, you know, maybe, maybe that's, you know, a second story on that rear portion that's restricted to one, one story or 18 feet now. You know, maybe that's a six story. But but, you know, from my perspective, really, height would be the only way you could really get a carrot out there for a developer.
And I, and I will again say a word, we don't want to sacrifice the private open space. That's, that's critical. If the private open space becomes public open space, then then there's no place you can get out of the public and be open.
Yeah, I agree. I I think those are all really good points. But I I also, I really appreciate Jill's comment about the ways that um, there could be some kind of shared shared private space, if that makes sense, right?
In the bigger blocks, I think there it makes sense, some of the things over in the West and where possibly up here. Where there's just, uh, they can't use all that space unless they put a new street through it. So um, I think initially there's, those are going to be surface parking lots like they are now, and then that that will start to go away. But in others, I think we should move on, but not, but continue to chew on this. But let's also think about um, when we get to the regulating plan, because I I'll, I'll admit, I've already started to think about some places where the these public open spaces can be, uh, where we can have additional ones. Okay. Chapin.
Page 28.
Yes.
I, I'm gonna say on the question about the maximum heights there in the diagram, the top left. I know there's people in the planning commission and a lot of people in the town would like to see it limited to two stories, three max. I personally am okay with up to five in the, what I would call the core, which is the urban part. But I will, I think going with the sort of center of the planning commission, it should be four and minimum three, the ones that you have in black. That's just, that's my opinion. And then on a significant question and comment on ground floor finished elevation, D to B, right, if they're on middle of page 28. For residential, then residential units. Required building, excuse me, the finished elevation, three feet to six feet, I think is the right number, five to eight seems awful high. Like you'd be looking up like that picture we were looking at a minute ago, where I felt like from the street, you're looking up to those windows. And then, but a secondary question is, when we do that, how do we handle handicapped entrances? And I think we want to avoid the case where the builder puts the handicapped entrance on the back saying, oh, people are going to park in the back and that's where the handicap. And we want a street presence, and we want people to be able to come and go from the street with strollers, with packages, with small children or handicap. So I would like us somehow throughout this to address handicapped accessibility.
Look at three, look at two B.
That's what I'm commenting on.
Entrances may be at sidewalk elevation with transitions within the building to meet the minimum finished floor elevation.
Exactly, exactly. And and I, uh, I think that's perfect, but I think we need to add more. I think we need to say, in this case, they need to have a lot, they need. I think we need to say they need to be handicapped accessible and they need a lobby space. So when you go inside, you go into something before you go up the elevator, you have somewhere to to pause, to wait.
That's all. That, I mean, we can say they have to have a handicapped accessible, but that's like saying the sun has to rise in the east. It's just gonna happen. It's ADA governs all.
Okay, so here's, I, I just watched. I just, uh, the other night, watched a development review board review in South Burlington for buildings being added to that large development off of Kennedy Drive. And the first thing they had done in preliminary is given the developer a height waiver if they would make four residential buildings relate to each other, like have the four corners that pointed towards each other at a crossing. Be somehow matching.
Yeah.
And then they came in with plans and they did not have handicapped accessible entrances in the front because they said people are going to be driving and coming in from their cars in the back. And so this came up just this week in the development review board in South Burlington. So I just want to be sure that we want it to be welcoming from the street for all.
Not the front, that that makes sense. Because I, because somebody might, although it sounds like they got some big problems up in South Burlington if they're giving people waivers to try and make a deal with them to make the buildings relate. Pardon my. As a, as somebody writes foreign-based codes. Ah, that's too bad.
Chapin, were those single-family homes or were those multifamily?
This is apartment buildings, basically, or I think they are probably doing them as um, as condos, but it's multi-story residential.
I'm surprised that, I'm surprised that they could get away with a second class-ish entrance like that. But I I think it makes absolute sense to make, there's a lot of language in here that I can't immediately point to because my brain isn't that good, that talks about how you have to have an entry from the street. So it's, it's very consistent, Chapin. Let's, I'm, I'm, let's add that, that ADA too.
To put a finer finer point on it, we say entrances may be at sidewalk level and somehow, to me, that's saying that you could have it only by stairs. And I, I just want to make sure that we we make it, if it isn't at sidewalk level, it's ADA, it's a handicapped accessible. Thanks.
Well, yeah, I think the the point is to to make it that, that, that all entries, entries from the street include ADA. We're required to have a full entry from off the street. You can't put the ADA in the on the back of the alley.
Thanks. And this, this applies on, on all these, of course, like on the next page on facade entry doors. At all facade entry points. That's all I got on these pages.
I have a question, but it's a, um, I mean, it applies to these pages because it applies to the building height. But it's sort of a bigger question and maybe a little bit for Matt. And I am, I would support five stories. I know that's not the prevailing opinion, but I think that for affordability and housing, that that's important. And going to continue to be really important for Williston to try to do that. And I, and I think I know, but I want to check that that having more stories would allow for more affordability. And if that is the case, then I really do want to push for that. I know that there's some appearance concerns about it, but I think that and Matt, I, I'm sorry, I don't know all the details of that email that was brought to our attention or the memo that was brought to our attention, Megan, about it just trying to keep equity and you know, these issues at the forefront. And I feel like this is a place that is pretty real where we can do that. And I don't understand the other places where we could do that. And maybe some of those are in building materials. But I, this seems like the most tangible to me. And now I'm rambling. I want to keep this, the equity thing in the, in forefront of my mind, and I, and I don't know the levers or the tools in the code to do that beyond building height.
I totally agree with that and. Thank you, Sheila. I think, I I totally agree. And, um, you know, the memo that you're referring to, you know, didn't go into specifics, but just essentially asked us to keep you know, trying to move toward whatever we can um, to generate more affordable housing and 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 some other things too, that are maybe not as pertinent to this, this point we're at. I too support five stories as shown in the diagram with the red. And so I, I think that you know, also in terms, you know, yes, on affordable housing, the other thing is that they height is, is the way not only that developers get things to pencil out, but also it uses less energy. And um, so when we can have you know, lower material costs because you're adding another story rather than building a whole different building. Or, uh, you know, which in a sense also saves energy when you have fewer materials. When you have that higher density, like Jeff was saying in his presentation. You're allowing for uh, lower energy costs. And of course, heat rises, so you're making the most of what energy you are using for for heating in particular in this climate. So I, I totally agree with with that sentiment.
Yeah, I'll jump. I agree with both of you for all those reasons. I don't think five to me is not a problem, six is not a problem. I know that we've talked about the fire and, you know, but I I remember Matt making the comment about when, when you go to cities, you see fire escapes, like there are different solutions around some of these things that we think are challenges. And this is a good way to to change and to go after some of these other goals we have as a town.
So I'll revise my earlier comment because I was deferring to what I thought the center of the planning commission was. I support, I support five in the urban general. And to me, for once you get out to urban two.
I think I think that's a great move. I'll tell you in all our work. The, the bonus story connection to affordable housing is just this, it's simple and it's powerful. And the the simple logic to this kind of inclusionary zoning is, uh, I remember that slide, one of, one of my slides at the beginning. My presentation, the private sector, the public sector sets up the rules of the game. What we're doing with this master plan is we're increasing the value on this land. Uh, and some of the developers may have trouble seeing that. Oh, you're just taking my land for streets, but we're making their land, we're giving them this much extra value. And so if you take, if you give them this much extra value, you can take this much off the top. They still have plenty down below and say, public benefit, affordable housing, and it gets rolled in and it's spread out, so it's not one building of low income. It's.
Should the, um, should the five story be linked to having some percent affordable? Like.
Yes, and and I would recommend, and I'm actually, right now, I'm a little bit red-faced that it's not written up, but simple, uh, simple thing was set a by right height. We said one height, maybe it's three. And but you can go, you get two floors on top of it if you do. And then it's a formula like, what? Whatever that square footage is, 50% of it has to be affordable housing. But, so I can't give you specific numbers, but we can do some calculations to make Jay, Taylor comfortable.
Yeah, um, if we're gonna have a conversation about inclusionary zoning. I one, a little outside Jeff's scope. Two, I'd like Regina here because she's worked on inclusionary zoning issues in South Burlington and Burlington extensively the past few years. And could much better talk about uh, the challenges of having an inclusionary zoning program. Um, but I, I, certainly we can bring resources to the table to to talk about inclusionary zoning if that's where the PC wants to go. I, but I do want to remind you, we're on a tight timeline, so if we want to have that conversation now, that may be a challenge. If we want to have that conversation, maybe once we have a drafted code and we're in the summer, uh, that might be uh, easier.
Taylor, talk to Regina, and I'm not sure, she might say, oh, it's no problem. We did it in Winuski. Because we did, the problem in Winuski was they insist, someone insisted on having you, letting you make a choice between energy efficient building, which they were going to do anyway in affordable housing. So, but but basically, we gave them for some locations or some types, two extra stories. So I, we, the precedence for the way we do it.
Bonus is easy, bonus is easy. Inclusionary zoning requirements get hard. And we don't have time to talk about why necessarily right now, but.
Yeah. But we.
I, I guess I, I would. I don't want to slow us down. I I respect the timeline. I want to stick to that. I do think that if this is where we can have the biggest influence on this issue, I do not want to just kind of skip over it. So if we can I don't know, and I don't know very little about it, I will be completely honest. So I respect that there are probably lots of issues to consider that I have no idea about. But I definitely think that it is worth at least some discussion and consideration as we develop this. Even if we continue on with the next chapters and hold this as we, as we go or or come up with time. Yeah, I would like to talk about it more, please.
Kid, for efficiency, can we ask staff to work on this? Because I think Taylor knows what we're after, and I know Matt. Melinda will do. Can we ask staff to work on it?
Yes.
With Jeff. Yeah.
And I think if we could, if we could get some sense of, um, I don't know.
Kind of involved, what what the options are.
Yeah, exactly.
Like in terms of like.
The sort of spectrum, because I know that inclusionary zoning is a big leap and we have not taken it. And that would be a major shift for us. But there's lots of incremental steps. And I agree that that with Sheila, that like, let's move forward with with all with all haste, but on but not let something like tipping over the edge into inclusionary zoning. Let us, don't let that hold us back. I guess, you know, it's kind of that balance. Can I just flag the fact that it's after nine? And once again, we have not made it fully through a chapter. And, and what are, what is the preference here? I, you know, looking through what we have left to go. This is not going to be super quick. I don't think it's a five-minute conversation to cover the rest of this chapter, and I don't think we should rush it. Matt, do you have a suggestion or perspective on this?
Yeah, I mean. Looking at what you have in front of you. A lot of this, we've, we've tripped into the individual building form standards for the various areas on the regulating plan. And if you look, you know, if you focus on what Jeff has identified as the the pink text here, the places where we think there's really room to modify things. Taylor, I don't know. I mean, we could, we could throw together a quick survey document to push out to the PC to just at least straw poll on this. And and maybe that facilitates the discussion a little bit when we come back next week. We, we, I mean, we here in Willis and not we here in Taylor.
Say, uh, okay, yeah, that'd be great, Matt, if you could do that. Yeah. I got, I got an affordable housing memo. I got it right now.
I can help with that too. You know, I think, I, I don't know, commission members, to the level that you've looked through the remainder of the chapter that's not been discussed tonight. A lot of it is in these various parts of town. You know, in the district, how tall, how deep, how wide. There's some interesting things about footprint limit. A little bit of a larger footprint limit if somebody does a grocery store. So there's, there's a way, I think I could do something quick to just try to poll on input and I could report that back to you folks next Tuesday night. And, you know, just see if we've got, you know, Ted's nodding. And yeah, to Jess's point, if there's something tonight, you know, someone's got their hairs on fire in regards to particular things you've seen. You know, it's probably going to be useful for him to hear that sooner rather than later, i.e. right now.
Can I jump in, Megan? That, um, I want to say my comments for the rest of this are pretty much repetitive because we're going through and I do have much repetitive, because we're going through, and I do have made choices on the, that you could do by a doodle pole or whatever. But the one that is outside of that, it's not a hair-on-fire issue. But when we talk about uses, and we talk about residential or office, where would classrooms fall in that? I don't answer it right now, but to me, we should clarify where classrooms and possibly gyms would fall in that, in those uses, because I think that we've already talked about having classrooms be an okay use on, on a lot of this. Thanks.
Okay, great. Does that give us all a sense of what, how we're moving forward?
And I think that the discussion is really, really good, even if we don't need to have the discussion. It's, I'm so glad we are having it. And I do think, though, that the second half of this chapter will go in a third of the time as the first half went.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think a lot of the same issues start to come up. So I do agree with that. And I appreciate Matt's offer for the, the poll. I think that'll be very efficient. I don't have any hair-on-fire issues for the rest of the chapter, from my perspective. I think most of mine were at the beginning. Section seven, I'm not sure what I, I understand your, your.
Oh, the, that's the, the uses or the function section.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
The, the intent is to be really liberal. I'm just thinking about the classrooms.
Right, right.
It may make a difference if it's a full-on school versus a kind of a private thing, but.
Like studio space, I think, or like a yoga studio, or ceramic, or something like that, right? Jill, did you have a comment?
Um, it's, it's not hair-on-fire, but it's that, you know, the bathrooms, they have public restrooms in Burlington that are like, kind of like the UC in Europe. It's like a W C in the square. I'm just curious if we could be thinking about that, because we are wanting people to walk without having people to purchase and then, you know, buy something in order to use a bathroom. But if that goes somewhere in here, thinking about it.
Yeah, great idea.
Let's talk about, when we talk, talk about section five.
Okay, good. All right. All right. Thank you all. Do any last notices or issues that we need, we must address right now?
I just want to thank everybody.
Yeah, this is great. This has been a wonderful conversation, and I feel like we're making a lot of progress. Okay, Matt, Melinda, do you have any final words for us?
No, we're all set. Planning Commission and team looked for my email with some sort of survey, as well as an announcement for next week's meeting. We've got a quick turnaround here. We'll see you then.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all who came tonight, because I know this was the, the Blue Moon Tuesday that we usually get off, right? So.
Making you guys work for it. Appreciate it.
That's right. Okay, thank you all. Meeting adjourned. I'm just going to make that proclamation.
Thanks.
Night.
Thank you.
All right, here we go.